Good evening. Welcome to the December 1st meeting of the Florissant City Council. Before we begin, if you are interested in making a comment at the hearing from citizens portion of the meeting, I would ask that you fill out a speaker's card. The speaker card are located on the table next to the entrance to the chamber. They're yellow. If you will complete that and hand it to the city attorney, they will pass it down the line. Item number on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. Please join the council in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the great good judgment of the Constitution of this world.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Shildroth, Hanky, Gano's absent, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. Item number three, Mr. Shildroth moves for the approval of the meeting minutes and the executive meeting minutes from November 10, 2014. That is seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved. Item number four, certificates of appreciation. Your honor.
The reason that we have this on the agenda tonight is to present some certificates of appreciation to those that have been hosting block parties in our city. This is an activity that we highly encourage. It's a way for our neighbors to get to know the people that live on your block. Most often, either myself and some police officers or both will visit, and often a city council member will visit the block parties. And, you know, it just gives us a chance to informally get acquainted better. We feel that this results in a safer city, safer neighborhoods, and we really appreciate those that host these things because it takes a little bit of work setting them up and getting your neighbors to agree to putting barricades up on the streets. So, we have a lot more than are present tonight, but we do have a few people that came. So, as I call your name, if you'll come up, and I'll make the presentation to you. Paul and Jen Baxter. And if you'll just stay up here, and we'll get everybody up here for a group photo. We'll just get a group photo with everybody. And Casey and Melissa Hutchings. Jamie Jenkins. Gary and Diane Lehman. Gary? I guess Diane's up here enough, huh? Kevin Enns? Kevin reminded me that another entity that often, almost always comes to the block parties is the Fire District, Florissant Valley Fire District, so we want to thank them for participating. And this is Diana Sikora. And Tammy Finley Stewart. Just want to say thank to all of you and everyone that organized block parties. It's, like I said, it's just a way for neighbors to look out for each other, to get to know each other better, and it makes for a much safer city, and this is something that our police department, the chief and I are both in agreement on. So, let's take our group picture. Everybody can crowd in. And also thanks to all the other neighbors that helped the sponsors because it takes more than one family to put one of these block parties on.
The next item on the agenda will be hearing from citizens. Again, if you're interested in making comment, please fill out a speaker's card located on the desk next to the chamber's entrance. We are seeing none. Next item on the agenda, communications. Clerk, please read the communications.
Letter dated November 11, 2014, from Tarot Troll regarding amending the current animal regulation codes. Letter dated November 17, 2014, from Vivian Burnson regarding the removal of an Emmerwee light pole.
Item number seven, public hearing. Public hearing 1411031.
The public hearing will be held by the Florissant City Council and the council chambers at 9:55 through St. Francois on Monday, November 24, 2014, at 7:30 p.m. on the following proposition. Jury's own for Missouri CVS Pharmacy LLC, the property located 696 and 698 North Highway 67, from B3 extensive commercial district to a B5 planned commercial district, to allow for the operation of a 24-hour drive-through pharmacy, retail liquor store, and medical clinic. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard, anyone with special need to contact city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Thank you. Is a petitioner present? Good evening, sir. For the record, if you would state your name and address, I'd be appreciative.
Chairman, Mayor, members of the board, my name is John King. I'm an attorney here in St. Louis County. This evening, I'm here representing Crowley and Associates who are the developers of the CVS pharmacies that you are, that you have one already, a brand-new one down at Florissant Dunn, and this will be the second one they have here in the city at Lindbergh and St. Dennis. With me this evening is Matt Fogarty, who is with Premier Civil Engineering. Matt is the civil engineer who did all of the civil engineering work and can answer any questions that you might have with regard to the civil engineering work done on this site. This site, as you said, was St. Dennis and Lindbergh. It's located in the Florissant Meadows Shopping Center. The tract that we have under contract is 1.49 acres, and it is, as I said, at Florissant Meadows Shopping Center. It is presently zoned commercial, and because we're locating in the shopping center, we're asking that the property be zoned B5 under special procedure ordinance in the city of Florissant. Matt had the site plan. As a lawyer, I'm not going to touch a thing. The building that we're showing you is the brand-new CVS Pharmacy building. It'll be exactly like the one we have located down at Dunn in Florissant. It'll be 13,225 square feet with one drive-through window located on the building. As you know, that drive-through is only for medicines, prescribed medicines, not aspirin or anything that can be bought inside the store without a prescription. The only thing you can buy through the drive-through window will be prescribed medicines from doctors. There'll be one curb cut located off of Lindbergh. It'll be a right-in, right-out-only curb cut, and for St. Dennis, there'll be a full-access curb cut, which will serve, will be serving the store. We will, we would like to be open 24 hours, seven days a week. We don't know that we'll do that right away. We'll wait and see how it works, but we would like to have the right to be able to do that at some time in the future. The, it will, we will be selling packaged liquor, not by the drink, but just packaged liquor, obtaining the licenses here in the city, this county, and the state. Around the site, we have 60 parking places and have landscaped it, as you can see from this site plan, that Matt has prepared and is before you today. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer the questions on the CVS, and Matt here can answer any civil engineering question you might have.
Yes, sir, Mr. King. Can you tell me, the pharmacy, would that be in your long-term goals, to do 24 hours on the pharmacy as well?
Yes.
And secondly, what would your timeline for beginning construction be?
My name is Matt Fogarty. I'm with Premier Civil Engineering, 308 TCW Court, Lake St. Louis, Missouri. The construction timeframe, we'll be pushing it to get it open next year, and that is because of the floodplain issues and getting permitted through MSD. However, we are looking to try to make that, if it does. CVS, a lot of times, they try to push up deals, you know, just depending on how things work overall for the country, so this will likely try to get done next year, but it could be a 16-store very early. So, I think right now, that's the anticipated goal.
Thank you. Mr. Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I noticed on it, you have a medical clinic. Do you have that, as of right now, at the one on Dunn? The medical clinic?
Yes.
Is, do you also, you don't have that at the one you just opened up? Okay.
The clinic at Dunn, the clinic comes in typically afterwards. Once the store hits a certain count of scripts, then they set it up to bring in, and they have an area set aside where, right now, it's forage, and then they transfer that into essentially.
Would the clinic be like, say, just for minor, you know, colds, flus, sore throats, stuff like that? No emergencies at all, correct?
Yeah, it's a first practitioner establishment, just very similar to.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lee.
Good evening. Thank you. Can you show me, I'm just trying to visualize here, looking at your diagram, the entrance to the store is going to be in that, like, left, upper-left right there? That's the entrance to the store?
Yes.
Okay. So, and the little, is that the awning for the drive-through in the corner of the other, to the left?
This is the drive-through. Yes, sir.
Okay, good enough. I was trying to visualize. Okay, so the entrance is actually going to be inside the shopping center.
Yeah, we're trying to create still a presence towards the road, yet at the same time, people are going to be coming.
I got it. Okay, makes sense. Thank you. Yeah, I was visualizing that as the entrance, and I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out with the drive-through right there, but that makes sense now. Thank you. That's all I need.
Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, Mr. Lee moves to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The public hearing will be closed. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the business, on the agenda, old business, bills for second reading. Bill 9048, I will make a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputo. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to JX Restaurants Incorporated, DBA Lulu Chinese Express, to allow for the operation of a sit-down, carryout restaurant for the property located at 8461 North Lindbergh.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a third time.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to JX Restaurants Incorporated, DBA Lulu Chinese Express, to allow for the operation of a sit-down, carryout restaurant for the property located at 8461 North Lindbergh.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Shildroth, Hanky, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Bill 9048 passes and becomes ordinance 8096, 8096. The substitute bill, 9049, I will make a motion to accept the substitute bill, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? I will now make a motion for a second reading of the bill, and that would be seconded by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor? Aye. Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Avi Kenlani, DBA Jimmy Johns, to allow for the operation of a sit-down, carryout, drive-through restaurant for the property located at 370 North Highway 67.
Mr. Shildroth makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, I would like to voice my opinion on this Jimmy Johns. I'm going to be not voting on Jimmy Johns, the fact that they're going to paint the brick. I know it's out of discretion. I'm a big Jimmy Johns fan, but I don't like the fact that we're going to paint it black, and then in the future, for some reason, if they leave, we still, we end up with a black building. So, overall, I'm not in favor of approving the fact of painting the building with a stain black, so just want to make that known.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. I'd like to weigh in on that. When I first became a member of the council, one of the very first potential business owners, I spoke with, wanted to paint a building, a masonry brick building, wanted to paint it, and looking into it, I was advised by my fellow counselors that that's a poor idea. And I went back and I met with him, and as we stood in front of his business, he pointed out no less than 10 businesses within a block of his that were painted either illegally or legally. I know that earlier last year, late last year, we had approved a business coming in with what I would call some unique building materials, and I think it's going to be a very good-looking car wash up there on Lindbergh. I think as this council moves forward, we're not painting this building, we are staining the building. I'm very comfortable that the stain will not chip and will last for the lifetime of the building for many, many years. I also have tremendous faith in the, after meeting with the business owner and his business plan, his business model, and I believe this is a very good fit for the city of Florissant, and we're on three, and I will be supporting it. All in favor of a second reading?
Third reading. You're on the third reading.
We're on third reading. Okay, prior to a, all in favor for a third reading? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Or ordinance to authorize a special use permit to Avi Kenlani, DBA Jimmy Johns, to allow for the operation of a sit-down, carryout, and drive-through restaurant for the property located at 370 North Highway 67.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Good evening, and please state your name and your address for the record, sir.
Good evening. My name's Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Ranch Lane. Three weeks ago, I was up here at the same time we were discussing this, and I thank you, Mr. Hernandez, because there's no guarantee that Jimmy Johns won't want to change their color schemes again in the future, and I don't know if you can stain over black. I know that if you, if I stain, if you stain a deck, you know, that's wood. Once you stain it dark, you can't go back and stain it light. I appreciate somebody having the gumption to stick up for the masonry laws. If they don't want, they don't want the masonry stained or painted, then let's abolish, delete that ordinance in the city code book. Thank you very much.
You see no other persons wishing to make comment. Clerk, please poll the council.
Shildroth, Hanky, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Substitute bill 9049 passes and becomes ordinance 8097, 8097. Bill 9050, 9050, Mr. Lee makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill.
Ordinance providing for a boundary adjustment between St. Louis County and the city of
Mr. Shildroth makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
Ordinance providing for a boundary adjustment between St. Louis County and the city of Florissant.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Shildroth, Hanky, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Bill 9050 passes and becomes ordinance 8098, 8098. Bill 9051, 9051, Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Caputo. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance repealing ordinance number 7930 and authorizing the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into a contract with the law firm of Lewis, Rice, and Fingers, represented by John M. Hessel, for legal services for the city of Florissant commencing on December 1, 2014, and ending on November 30, 2016.
Mr. Jones makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
Ordinance repealing ordinance number 7930 and authorizing the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into a contract with the law firm of Lewis, Rice, and Fingers, represented by John M. Hessel, for legal services for the city of Florissant commencing on December 1, 2014, and ending on November 30, 2016.
Mayor Schneider.
Yeah, I've been holding off asking for some legal advice today. Appreciate if you would pass this, so then I could get some advice after the meeting.
Prior to a final vote being taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on this bill? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Shildroth, Hanky, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Bill 9051 passes and becomes ordinance 8099, 8099. Congratulations, Mr. H. Next item on the agenda, new business, board appointments. Seeing none, we'll move along to bills for first reading. Bill 9054, 9054.
Ordinance amending the floodplain management ordinance.
Bill 9055.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into a program agreement for federal funding for project number BRM 5595616, known as the St. Anthony Lane Bridge Project.
Mr. Shildroth makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? All in favor of a second reading? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill for the second time.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into a program agreement for federal funding for the project number BRM 5595616, known as the St. Anthony Lane Bridge Project.
Mr. Hanky makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Shildroth, Hanky, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
Ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Florissant to enter into a program agreement for federal funding for project number BRM 5595616, known as the St. Anthony Lane Bridge Project.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Shildroth, Hanky, Schmidt, Hernandez, Lee, Jones, Egan, Caputo.
Bill 9055 passes and becomes ordinance 90009000. Bill ninety fifty-five passes and becomes ordinance nine zero 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 nine thousand.
Eighty-one hundred, actually.
I beg your pardon?
It's eighty-one hundred.
Yes, that'll be eighty-one hundred.
You get an excuse.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the cancellation of the December twenty-second meeting, keeping with the tradition that this council has had for many, many, many years. I will make a motion to cancel the meeting that is scheduled to be held on December twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, seconded by Mr. Caputa. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let the record reflect. Council announcements. Mr. Jones.
Uh, I'd like to let everybody know that, uh, the car wash has broke ground at, uh, Charbonneer and Lindbergh, so I look forward to, uh, seeing that come up out of the ground. I'd also like to give a shout-out to, uh, Peroni's Pizza for taking care of the emergency responders, uh, last week. Uh, they jumped on Front Street and, uh, sent a bunch of pizzas over on the house, uh, for those guys, uh. I'd like to thank the police officers and the fire departments, uh, for all their time and energy in, uh, making sure everybody was safe. Thanks.
Mr. Shildroth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to echo Mr. Jones's comments. I'd like to thank Chief Lowry and the entire Florissant Police Department for their dedication, hard work, and professionalism over the past several days after the grand jury announcement of the Michael Brown case. I would also like to thank the folks on Kate's Cove for hosting a recent block party. I had a fantastic time and look forward to going back there in the near future. Thank you.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that I will be having a ward meeting this Thursday night, December fourth, at the JFK Community Center. Actually, we're doing two, one at eleven o'clock and another one at seven o'clock. Mayor Schneider will be joining me, uh, as will Dan Boyle, Judge Boyle, and someone from the police department will be there as well. So, just a reminder, this is our annual year meeting. I encourage everybody to come, bring your questions, and, um, look forward to seeing you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I would like to remind people that this is the winter seasons upon us, and, uh, I've been wa, watching the notable crimes, and we have quite a few cars that get stolen when people start them up, leave them unlocked, and then go in the house to keep warm. Please make sure you keep an eye on your vehicle so we can not have so many of these as we've been getting in the last few weeks. Mayor Schneider.
Yeah, I, I also would like to, uh, in behalf of our dedicated employees, uh, great citizens of the city, um, add, uh, my kudos and thanks to Chief Tim Lowry and his command staff, officers, and support staff for their professionalism, sacrifice, dedication, and devotion to duty. They gave up their Thanksgiving so that the rest of us can enjoy a peaceful holiday with our families. The chief and I have made a conscious effort to respect the seriousness of these times and the feelings of various stakeholders, and we've attended numerous meetings with other law enforcement personnel, clergy, elected and appointed officials, social advisors, et cetera. The chief and I are in frequent contact and have plans for various contingencies. I'm gonna continue with a serious note, but also, uh, a little bit phasing into the holiday news. Uh, we have a winter blood drive, uh, this Friday, December fifth, from ten a.m. to seven P.M. This is gonna be at the James J. Egan Center, and you can look at, uh, you can call one-eight-hundred Red Cross, and, uh, you can listen to Acacia ninety-five, and it's, it's their winter blood drive. It's got various locations throughout the metropolitan area, and this one's at James J. Egan Center. Monsignor Ulrich informs me that Jennifer Thomason, uh, owner of Stems, uh, from Sacred Heart, has been chosen to join seventy others to decorate, uh, the White House in Washington, D.C. So, congratulations to her. And, uh, there's all kinds of things going on in the holidays, uh, here in Florissant. This weekend, we have, uh, Project Liftoff, the twenty-seventh Project Liftoff at Egan Center at six o'clock for the Dare-Aid Children, fifth through eighth grade. And prior to that, here at City Hall, uh, from two to five, we're gonna have face painting and all kinds of other children's activities. Santa's gonna be here, and then at five o'clock, we're gonna, uh, turn on the, uh, we're gonna have the Valley of Flowers Queen, her court, turn on the Christmas lights display here at City Hall. In addition to that, uh, we've got, um, letters from Santa. If you'd like to get a letter from Santa, you can contact our JFK Center, uh, and give us some information about the child. And, uh, we're gonna have, uh, winter break camp, uh, during the Christmas holidays. Call the J, uh, Egan Center or the JFK Center for information. There'll be, um, a snowman building contest this winter, so if you wanna sign up for that, again, contact our Parks and Recreation, and, uh, you'd be eligible for the, uh, snowman building contest. We're also gonna have a Christmas house decorating contest. Uh, those applications are free to Florissant residents at the Egan Center and JFK again. Uh, that'll be judged by the Youth Advisory Commission. They do that every year, and that's a good time for them. And at the Nature Lodge, we have a couple of, uh, events. We have Santa's coming again. This is on December fourteenth at the Nature Lodge from ten to eleven-thirty. And then, uh, on, uh, let's see, this Sat- this Saturday, if you wanna learn how to feed the birds in the wintertime, you can co, go to the Nature Lodge, and they're gonna have a program on, uh, how to make, uh, bird feeder material. I'd like to congratulate and thank, uh, North County Christian School for their, um, good deed, and they, uh, provided a bunch of meals for the country of, uh, of Haiti. Uh, we, I helped them out one day back, like, back in November. We made a bunch of, uh, food for the pe, the children of that country. And then also, we had a dedication in the Walk Through History for Rosemary Davison on November eighteenth. Rosemary was one of our distinguished citizens, and she had so many meaningful awards, and she didn't seek any of them, and, uh, she had the, from presidents, governors, um, from the Saint Louis area, from the state, um, just almost too numerous to mention. Some of her accomplishments are on her plaque on the sidewalk near the shrine. So, we'll, uh, see you guys next week. We'll have a meeting next week.
Yes, Your Honor, we do. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be December eighth, twenty fourteen, at seven thirty P.M. Mr. Shildroth moves for adjournment, seconded by Mr. Hanky. All in favor? Aye. The council will stand adjourned.